I call the August 12, 2019 City Council Committee to hold order. The clerk will call a roll.
Borowitz, Burton.
Here.
Crawford.
Here.
Frank.
Here.
Freeman.
Here.
McGee.
Here.
Porter.
Here.
Radcliffe.
Here.
Snow.
Here.
Stevens.
Here.
Nine present.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, good news to share tonight. We set a new record for fair attendance for last week of 222,000 people. Yay. Under public comment, public forum, we have nothing scheduled. Under number one, reports of officers, boards, and special committees, building and planning and zoning unfinished business, there is none. Under number two, building, planning, and zoning new business, there is none. Under public works unfinished business, we have a motion to remove from the table, may have a motion to remove the intersection review. Motion by Alderman Burton, second by Alderman Snow. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If they oppose, is now removed from the table. Mr. Burton, would you like to lead the discussion?
Yeah, this is continued from, I believe, the last Public Works Call on the whole of the hall. We have Lisa Jones in the audience, if you'd like to speak still.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, everyone. Thank you for allowing me to speak on this issue again. I was here in June. We live in the neighborhood of Fifth and Garfield, and we're asking for a stop sign to be placed on Fifth Street where there currently is not one. There's a two-block straightaway that poses a problem between Pearl Street and State Street, and we have a continued problem with speeding drivers, kids in the neighborhood at risk, and so on. So, in order to kind of put that forward, Director Anderson was kind enough to look at what the Illinois Department of Transportation said about that intersection, and I did review the memo that Alderman Burton gave me, and it certainly is understandable that according to the IDOT, that that intersection does not meet the criteria for a stop sign. However, what I did notice was that there wasn't any mention of speed as being a consideration, whether there had been any speed monitoring or anything like that, and that, none of what was addressed on the memo really is, was anything about our issue, which was, which was the speeding. I did want to thank you for taking the time to do that memo. It was pretty clear when we were here last time, they give you an awful lot of work to do, so thank you for doing that. I would also like to add that according to the IDOT criteria, probably none of the other intersections, as you go down Fifth Street, would qualify either, but they also have stop signs. Our intersection at Fifth and Garfield is the only one between Pearl Street and East Avenue that does not have a stop sign or a yield sign. There is a yield sign at Caswell Street and Fifth Street, but ours certainly gets a lot more traffic because of the Pearl Street to State Street straightaway. We often see police officers monitoring cars for the four-way stop sign on Pearl Street, and in talking to a couple of those very nice officers, they have said that they know that speeding is an issue on that street, as it is, I'm sure, in other neighborhoods as well. I'm sure we're not alone. So, we still do feel strongly that the safest, most proactive solution is to put a stop sign in, but, so we would respectfully ask for that, for the votes to make that happen. However, if it cannot, that cannot be done, we would ask that at least the yield signs that are now on Garfield and Fifth be moved to Fifth Street in the hopes that that would at least slow the traffic down some. I think another relatively, or it seems to me as a layperson relatively simple thing to do might be to post a speed limit sign in our area. There isn't one that's within those couple blocks. And also maybe a slow children at play sign. I do see some of those, and that seems like maybe that would hopefully give people pause to slow down. So, we did do a petition. It's an online petition, so there are a couple, I think you all have copies. There were a couple enthusiastic people from Indianapolis, Indiana, and Evergreen Park who signed the petition, but I think we can, and they didn't indicate that they were from Belvidere. We can probably discount those, but we did have 19 good Belvidere people sign it, and a lot of them, you'll note, made comments that they are familiar with the intersection, have had close calls at that intersection. One lady says she drops her kids off and goes every day at the sitter, so goes through that intersection, and has had problems there herself. So, I would just ask respectfully that you consider that and consider our request.
Thank you. Burton, do you have any comments?
Well, yeah, for information, for the council as well, refresher, if you will, the purpose of stop signs is not to control speed, and they're not there to control speed. They are there to allow for the movement of traffic in an orderly fashion, such that if you have enough traffic or a preponderance of traffic on one direction opposed to the other, and it makes it difficult for cars to pull out to proceed, then you use your stop signs and/or your yield signs to help facilitate that movement of traffic. You do not use stop signs to control speed. When you look through the criteria here, I gather from what you were saying, as far as the, because there's a yield condition now, Garfield yields at Fifth.
Yes.
So, your ultimate request would be to go to a four-way stop, for example, at that intersection.
Or even a two-way stop, as long as the stop sign was on Fifth Street.
Okay, so, the reason, because Fifth Street already stops one block either direction. It's only a two-block section that does it, it's not covered. It's posted as a 25 mile an hour speed limit. So was Garfield. They're both posted 25. To go to a four-way stop, the IDOT criteria for a four-way stop is you have to have five or more accidents in the last 12 months. We have no accidents that have been recorded at that intersection for the last five years. So, it's more, if you, if the major concern from the constituents is a speed issue, then it's, that would be an enforcement issue as opposed to a regulation issue. Based on the information that's provided in the memo, and the lack of accident history, if you will, what is there sufficient? Now, if the council decides they want to go ahead and change the yield signs to stop signs, you can go ahead and do that, but based on the information that's been provided, there's not, there's not a warrant to do that at this point in time. But certainly, the council can consider that. But again, I think because of the way, with, again, moving the traffic in Fifth, already stops in one block either direction, I would recommend that the signage remain the way it is with the Garfield having to yield and/or stop at the intersection.
Can you comment on the slow children playing situation?
Yeah, the slow children at play signs are, they're no longer recognized by IDOT. Typically, our policy has been we use those where children congregate. You can make the argument that every neighborhood in town would qualify to have a children at play sign, so we tend to use those only in the, in the public playground areas. And like I said, IDOT does not recognize them anymore, so it's been, for the last several years, we have not put up any. What you see out there now is ones that have been basically grandfathered in from being up there for a long period of time.
Do we have any sitting around?
That I don't know. Now, what we do have is we have the advisory sign plates. I think we still have some left, about the 25 mile an hour speed limit, and that could be utilized. But again, we don't post every, every block of every city street does not have a speed limit posted on it. By ordinance, it's 25 miles an hour within the city limits unless posted otherwise. So, you'll see roads that are posted at 30, 35, and 40, but your bulk of your residential roadways are all 25, and that's why they're not all posted that frequently. The cost of that would be a lot.
I understand. We just have people going a whole lot faster than 25 miles an hour.
Right, and it goes, it goes basically back to, it's an enforcement issue.
Deputy Chief, could you comment on that?
Unfortunately, I wasn't here for the beginning part of the conversation prior to tonight, so I can't speak about, obviously, what I don't know. However, we do have several different avenues for enforcement that the police department could provide to the neighborhood, one being the speed trailer to identify when and if there is a speed issue, and then if there is a speed issue that we identify, we can assign our officers there to do enforcement to help slow down traffic in the neighborhood. Obviously, I would need more information from you about when and where those problems occur, so perhaps you could give me a call, and we could make those arrangements, and maybe we can help you out.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Attorney.
Brent made a comment a few moments ago that the warrants obviously did not justify the stop sign, but then suggested the council could enact the ordinance anyway, placing the stop signs, and in fact, the council has done that in the past. And each time I, as occurred, I've mentioned that that really wasn't proper under state law, but I never went into great detail. The Illinois Motor Vehicle Code grants local authorities like the city of Belvidere the ability to put stop signs, stoplights, things like out there, but it does say that the traffic control devices shall conform to the state manual specifications and must be justified by traffic warrants stated in that manual. The stop sign here was not meeting those warrants, and, you know, frankly, it does not come up in court very often. People don't know to check and see if there were warrants justifying or not, but that did come up about a year and a half, two years ago for a speeding ticket out on Newburg Road, where there had not been warrants done on speeds, on one of the changing speed zones. We lost that case in court, won speeding ticket, no big deal, right? We then did the warrants and had put in place. Where that becomes an issue is where that traffic stop is then also leading to a felony arrest. For example, this happens a lot. Pull somebody over for blowing a stop sign, you walk up, you notice slurred speech, rubber, glassy eyes. Sir, are you under the influence of alcohol? Yes, I am. Okay, put him in the cussie, do an inventory search of the car, and obviously you find a couple kilos of cocaine. Well, that would all get thrown out if there was no basis for the stop as fruit and poisonous tree. So, while you can do it, keep in mind that there are possible repercussions if in fact you adopt a stop sign without the proper warrants.
So, do we have any of those slow children at play signs that are warehoused somewhere?
I don't know. I don't, I'd have to look. I really don't know. If they, if we do, they're borderline antiques, probably.
Well, I will share a personal experience. My brother-in-law lives at Fifth and Warren, and I often, coming back from Walgreens or from Pacemaker, turn there and come down, and I have noticed that people seem to be driving faster than speed limit. But that's not the only street in town. I mean, every street in town, people drive faster. We can certainly put the speed trailer out there. I would certainly think that we could look and see if we have one of those signs, and I don't see why we couldn't put it up if we have one, because whether the state recognizes them anymore or not, drivers would recognize them. But, it's up to the council to make the decision. As our city attorney, Mr. Drell is always very careful to let us know there are liabilities with some of the things that we do, and so, everything under consideration. What it would take from the council is I would need a motion to approve putting the stop sign there, and then a second, and then a majority vote to forward it on the council. Someone like to make that motion? Now, is that to replace the yield sign with a stop sign?
You're not talking to make it a four-way stop?
You want to go for the grand prize and make the motion to put a stop sign up? Is it a four-way stop, or?
Right now, right now, Garfield yields at Fifth, so, that's why, that's why I mentioned, if you wanted to change a yield sign to the stop sign, you could do that. I don't think you're going to jeopardize anything. But if you want to make the big jump and go to a four-way stop, then yeah, it definitely does not meet the warrants for a four-way stop.
We, we were just asking for the stop sign to be on Fifth Street and nothing at Garfield, to be consistent with the other intersections as you go down Fifth Street.
Well, again, then you're going to have, you're going to have Fifth Avenue stopping at every, every block, and for traffic movement for the entire neighborhood, I think it's better to keep your, your control on the Garfield side as opposed to Fifth, because Fifth is already controlled. You only have a two-block section in there, then it's, again, it's posted 25 miles an hour.
I understand, but Fifth already does stop at every single block from, from State Street to East Avenue. You already do stop at every single block.
Marcia.
That was just my.
So, do you, do you think that if we put a stop sign on Fifth and just removed the yield signs on Garfield, you don't have any problem with, with traffic on Garfield speeding, or you don't think that would be an issue removing the yield sign?
I don't. I do, we have had times where people have blown through the yield sign, because people don't seem, seem to take those as a suggestion rather than that you really have to. But where we see the most, by far, the most issue is with the speeding of the cars on Fifth Street, in that straightaway from Pearl to State Street. And I do understand, Director Anderson, what you're saying about that. It's not a means to, to control speed. I do understand. We're just trying to keep our neighborhood safer for the kids.
Then I guess I would caution council, if you change that, even though it's just a yield sign on Garfield, that'll be a new mindset for the motorists that have been used to that for, for years, as far as what they need to do with that intersection.
Additional questions or comments from the council? Yes.
Could we, could we switch the yield sign from Garfield to Fifth? Do you think, no?
I would be hesitant to do that, but if council desires, we could certainly do that. We would probably have to flag the, flag the intersection to make, to provide as much notice as we can or awareness to the motorists of, of the change that's taken place. Again, if the concern is speed, stop signs are not the way to deal with a speed issue. I would recommend that, that if they have not done the enforcement process with the speed trailer and so forth, should go through that process, and you can revisit it again in a couple months to see if it's made a difference or not.
Alderman Porter, did you have a comment?
Well, I was just wondering what the actual cost is, total cost to install a stop sign.
Stop sign installation, by the time you get the signs and the posts, for an installation, it's probably $150 to $200 material costs.
Deputy Chief?
Just a question. Your speed issue is on Garfield, correct?
No, on Fifth.
So, a two-block?
The, the traffic stops, there's a four-way stop at Pearl and Fifth. Then there's a two-way stop at Fifth and State. So, between Pearl and State Street on Fifth, there's nothing. It's a two-block just straightaway, and that's where we see the speeding.
And it's only, that's only a 600-foot section of roadway, so, I mean, it's not that long.
Maybe not if you, if you live there, it's pretty long. I mean, speeding cars and worrying about the kids, it's, it's difficult.
Alderman Stevens, did you have a comment, sir?
Yes, I was going to ask, as Brent said, maybe we should table and then put the speed trailer up there, and then we would, might have the warrant if the speed was above and beyond what we would think it should be. How would that be with you? I mean, we're talking another month or two, unfortunately.
Sure, it's certainly worth a try.
The speed trailer records every vehicle that goes by in the time period, and it has a readout so that we know people are traveling at higher speeds. And it's amazing that people will see that, and they think, well, there's no copper on here, I'm still going to speed. But it'll give you a readout that's interesting.
Okay.
Yes. Alderman Frank?
I was just wondering if we could do the speed trailer closer to school, because it would be a more accurate readout with traffic going back in school, kids, parents taking their kids to school.
More accurate readout, I don't follow.
Well, it's going to be busier at school time. If we do the trailer now, it won't be as busy as if we were to do it in two weeks.
What would be your recommendation?
We could start it at any time. We could, in fact, we could even leave it out for two weeks. Solar powered, so it's not an issue of time. But I don't think that there's really going to be that big of a difference in traffic flow from one week to the next time.
Would that satisfy, would that be reasonable, do you think?
I think that's reasonable.
Would you be satisfied to try that?
I would.
Alderman Snow?
I know I'll get a new name from the Public Works guy, but I'd make a motion that we do put one on each side of the street, the slow children play, at play. So, I'm making that a motion.
I can hear that clearly.
Making a motion to put the slow children at play, slow down the signage for that. I'd make that motion.
Do we have a second? A motion, a second? Yes.
If you're going to do that, then I would suggest the council prepare guidelines as to where you're going to put them and where you're not going to put them, because every neighborhood, every block in town would qualify for quote-unquote "children at play" signs. And we've got 125 centerline miles of streets, so we can count up how many children at play signs that you could be installing. So, just be aware of that.
And I realize that to a certain extent, but just like this intersection, it's an isolated, somebody brings it forward, so I don't think we'd have a large run, because I don't think this is going to get the coverage that, you know, oh my God, they're putting in the signage and it's going to go rampant. That would be my opinion, but I, maybe I'll be wrong.
Alderman Snow, do you remember three years ago, we had a run, we had somebody once a month here for stop signs, because we put up a stop sign. And so, why not my neighborhood, and then, there are several factors here at play. We always want children to be safe. The speed limit in this community is 25 miles an hour unless otherwise marked. And it becomes an issue of control and looking at the speed trailer. We don't know if we even have any of those signs, so, you know, that's why I asked the question, and if they're no longer recognized by IDOT. So, if we had one sitting around, I could see that, but we're not going to be able to get them to put in unless we have them manufactured, if every neighborhood decides they want one. It's kind of like the ones, deaf child signs and things, you know, that you used to be, you used to see in a lot of neighborhoods and so forth. Ald, excuse me, Director Anderson?
And another reminder for council, too, we've had, since I've been with the city, we've gone through two audits, sign audits by IDOT, where we have been required to remove stop signs that were not warranted. We've gone through that process twice, and I foresee that they will continue to do that from, from time to time, and they utilize withholding of our motor fuel tax monies and other funds, federal funding for us, our failure to comply with their requirements when we do go through those signage audits.
Can we agree to agree to try the speed trailer and then revisit this? Does that satisfy everybody? Should I have a motion to table, or?
Well, first of all, we do have a motion on the floor, so, there is a motion and a second to have a children at play sign cap west Fifth and Garfield Avenue.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye. All those opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Okay, motion fails.
And we don't necessarily need to table this. It would be a new item when we get that information, and then if you give us your contact information, we can let you know when that's on the agenda.
Sure, okay. Thank you very much.
I want to thank you for taking the time to come back and talk to us again, and for being concerned about your neighborhood. That's great.
Thank you all for listening.
Thank you.
Do you need a more, a speed trailer?
No. Under number four, Public Works New Business, we have the White Clift Lift Station Improvement Project, the wastewater treatment plant. Director Anderson?
In your packets, it was a memo. Our White Clift Lift Station Improvement Project contract has been let to Stensham Excavation and Blacktop Group in the amount of $1,080,956.85. Attached to my memo is a engineering agreement for construction engineering services with CES, who is a design engineer for this project. That amount is not to exceed $76,954. It's based on a 225-day construction period with 60 days of actual construction, and will be billed on a time and material basis with that not to exceed amount. I would recommend approval of the construction engineering services agreement from CES, in that amount not to exceed $76,954 for the White Clift Lift Station Improvement Project, and this work will be paid for from the sewer connection fees 0510.
I have a motion to that. I'll make that motion. Alman Crawford may have a second. Second by Alderman Snow. Questions, comments, further discussion, as we wait for Alderman Radcliffe for a minute.
Stevens?
Yes, Alderman Stevens, sorry, I didn't see you.
The $76,000, that is for them to inspect the work, because they've already designed it, or what exactly? We've got another one coming up, so I just want to make sure everyone knows what the fee is for.
These are the construction services end of it, so, once, once the picks up where the, or the contract left off, so, it's the, the construction management, so they go through the pay request, make sure everything is right, administer those, they make sure the lien waivers are there, they do the construction inspection where they actually watch and observe it, they stake everything out, they provide that elevation information, and those details to the contractor as well.
Thank you. Alderman Snow?
So, I see in this agreement, it's obviously some kind of standard form, but there's an awful lot of line outs and big Xs and stuff. Can you enlighten us on that?
Yes, it's a standard form IDOT agreement, and it pertains mainly to IDOT projects. The engineer decided to utilize that form because the meat and potatoes over the agreement is in there. We just, he just had to black out all the stuff that doesn't apply, because it's not a standard IDOT project. IDOT doesn't do too many lift stations.
Alderman Radcliffe, we have a motion before us, a motion and a second to approve $76,954 for construction services from CES Inc., which is a local firm in accordance with the White Clift Lift Station Improvement Project as a whole. Additional questions or comments? Hearing now, all those in favor of approval, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion is approved. It will be forwarded to City Council for final disposal. Item B.
Item B, memo in your packet for the Appleton Forest Main Extension Project, and again, the construction engineering services. The project has been awarded to Apollo Trenchless in the amount of $335,924. The proposal from CES submitted for construction services is not to exceed $30,809. The cost is based on a 30-day construction period and will be billed again on a time and material basis with the not to exceed amount. I would recommend approval of the proposal from CES, and them not, amount not to exceed $30,809, and it will be paid for from sewer connection fees 0510.
May have a motion to that effect. Motion by Alderman Snow may have a second. Alderman Porter, questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor. Alderman Snow?
And Brent, it, it always does the not to exceed, but in theory, if it's, it is based on a hourly and how much time they do invest in it, it could run over, or it could run under, or does it ever, and they usually just hold to that dollar amount?
No, when it's on time and material not to exceed, it can run under, or if it runs over, what that means is I have to come back to council and get your approval for overages, or anticipated overages on the contract.
Additional questions or comments? Hearing now, all those in favor of approval, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion is approved unanimously. It will be forwarded to City Council for final disposition. Item C.
Memo in your packet, our current budget includes $10,000 in the capital fund to purchase a new equipment trailer for the street department. We've received two proposals for the new trailer, Northern Illinois Tractor and Equipment at $8,894, and Rondo Enterprises for $9,507.39. There's pictures of the trailer that we're looking to purchase attached to the memo. It'll be utilized for the street department. Right now, all of Public Works shares one trailer, basically, for our skid steer mini excavator, our smaller pieces of equipment. And with all the work that we've been doing, it's getting harder and harder schedule-wise to, somebody seems like they're always using the trailer when somebody else needs to use a trailer. So, that's why it ended up in the budget, and I would recommend approval of the proposal from Northern Illinois Tractor and Equipment to purchase a B&amp;B partial tilt trailer at a cost of $8,894. This trailer will be paid for from the capital fund, and then the existing trailer that is technically street department's is going to get transferred to the water department.
May have a motion approved. I'll make that motion. Motion by Alderman Crawford may have a second. Second by Alderman Snow. Second by Alderman Snow, questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor. Alderman Snow?
Out of curiosity, on the front of the trailer is a big triangle box. What is that? Any idea what's in there? 'Cause it looks like it's got a spare tire attached otherwise, so I didn't know what the...
It's a space to keep your latches and your straps and stuff.
Additional questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved unanimously, forwarded to City Council for final discussion. On item D, water tank cleaning proposals.
Again, memo in your packet, we've started our facility, water storage facility inspections that Strand is doing for us. Part of that process is that we have to drain all the tanks. We've drained the ground reservoir at well number three. To no one's surprise, we've, we have found a large amount of sediment in the bottom of the tank that needs to be removed. Sediment basically being sand. We have fine aggregates, we have reviewed, received two proposals to do that work, Collin Sanitary at $5,770 per day, and Stewart Spreading at $8,500 per day. We're estimating that it's gonna take two days to remove the sand that's accumulated. The good news is we'll be able to stockpile that material and use it for trench backfill when we're doing service repairs and line work and so forth for both water and sewer, so it will be reutilized. I would recommend approval of the proposal from Collin Sanitary in the amount of $5,770 per day to remove the sediment from the reservoir at well number three. This work will be paid for from the water department line, item 615-810-6040.
May I have a motion to approve? Motion by Alderman Crawford, second by Alderman Porter, questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor. Alderman Freeman?
Yeah, Brent, I was just curious, how much water do those tanks hold? And how, what is the process for emptying them? What do you do with all that water?
When we empty them, we put their discharge in the storm drain system, so we've got pipe, we reduce pipe size down so that we don't overload the storm sewer system. It basically goes to the river. As far as size, they range in size anywhere from 300,000 gallons to 1.5 million gallons. And as we go through these facilities, we'll probably be back to you for perhaps some more sand removals in some of the other tanks. We'll see what we got. Some of them have more access issues than others. This one in particular, gotta go through the confined space and everything to get to it, which is why we're recommending contract as opposed to doing it ourselves. And again, it's gonna depend on the amount of quantity that we find, so don't be surprised if I come back to you with a request for sand removal at some of our other facilities, too.
So how long does it take to refill those tanks, then? What do, what do we use, like?
Uh, it's refilled by the system, so it doesn't take long at all. It's 24, probably most of the tanks, we can do 24, 36 hours.
Additional questions or comments? Alderman Snow?
Was this a budgeted item? I realize it's a self-funded deal, but was it budgeted?
Yeah, it comes out of our contractor line item, out of our ONM.
Anybody else? All those in favor of approval, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is approved unanimously, forwarded to City Council for final discussion. Up next, and thank you, Director Anderson. Up next, we have Deer Hills and Deer Woods Two. This is an FYI from the city attorney concerning moving forward with the process.
So a little bit of history. Use this math a little bit, for those of you that may not, you guys might have heard the area. This red-black dotted line at the bottom of the screen, which is south, represents the northern extent of the city's boundaries. And the city of Business Route 20, State Street, and Distillate Road, Beaver Valley Roads. In 2005, the city, of course, was in that early timeframe in fairly expansion mode. We had just done the distillate road annexations that resulted in the building of River Run, River Run, and the condominium properties on the east side of the distillate road. And Landmark Development came to the city with a development plan that covered north of Business Route 20 and east Beaver Valley Road with some residential development. Some area west of Beaver Valley Road, and south of the creek, which is commercial development. A little bit of residential development over here on the west side of the distillate road, and then Deer Woods Two, which is all part of state development, which is actually not connected to that, that area. To get to that area, you actually have to drive to a county subdivision. That area is not contiguous to the city, was not contiguous to the city at that time. And what that means is the city could not annex the property. Illinois allow, allows, and allowed us to do what's called pre-annexation agreement, it's for the annexation, you know, you call pre, 'cause it's not next, which allows that development to happen. Under city auspices, pursuant to our ordinances, we are currently exercising, I believe, fire protection out there and police protection out there. The roads are built to our standards, and the roads that are in, we are maintaining. Our ordinances apply out there, so if you pass a speed ordinance, a stop sign ordinance, our fireworks ordinance, is everything apply out there. If there was any sales tax in the area, we would get the sales tax dollars. However, they do not pay city property taxes. Nor do they get to vote for you or for the mayor. One of the appointments called ahead occurred two elections ago, when a gentleman lived in this residential pod down here, called out very hot, he just tried to vote, and said, they said he couldn't vote for mayor. Well, I understand, sir. Well, that's taxation without representation. We're not really in the city concern. Well, I don't care, that's taxation without representation. Sir, you're not paying city property tax dollars. I'm not? No. Oh, good then, thank you, Clay. But what it does mean is that we've been providing these services that are not in the city. This was originally done because we assumed, in 2005 or during that time period, it'd grow quickly. It just didn't happen. The annexation agreement, that one, was entered into as a non-homual unit of government, it became homable. It has a 20-year term, started in '05, so it'll expire in June of 2025. At that point, does anyone guess what happens? Do we disconnect the water? Probably not, but could. Do we stop maintaining the streets? Maybe. That means they dump down a township, whose ordinances they live by. They're built under our zoning code, under our building codes, not necessarily counties. And by the way, we don't get the population property tax dollars on. We've identified two farms that are south of 20, immediately adjacent to the city, that if we were to annex either one of them, that would make the entire property contiguous to the city. At which point, we're gonna be in annexation proceedings, everything in the city. We have not approached either of those farms yet, and that's one of the reasons we're here tonight, is to talk about possible doing that. Annexation agreements require that once the property is contiguous, the owner can consent to the annexation. I can be honest, I tell you, in this situation, it's gonna be a little bit difficult, because a lot of the blocks have been sold. You probably have to reach out to the property owners, say, you need some to pay for to next to the city, and they refuse, and they have to record to get a location file, and you sort of look there and improve. But that is the nature of the beast, and we need that to start going in. But, what we're talking about tonight is whether or not we want to pursue the annexation of those two farms, or one of the two farms at least, to try to get that property contiguous to the city, and then begin the annexation process. Again, we have not talked, in the last conversation I had with the land of farmers, was back in the mid-2000s, when people saw dollar signs at half the grocery stores. So that's what we wanna talk about tonight. One of the things we can do, and we don't need a decision tonight, but show of hands on whether you'd support it or not at least, is obviously, those farmers had actually no incentive to annex the city. They have no development horizon on the way down. Now, they think, have the doors, say, we want to develop. So why would they, next to the city, pay property tax dollars? The city, not the essence of the city. And one of the things we can do is agree that, if you're next to the city now, we will rebate the property tax dollars until such time as we develop, for something other than agriculture. At that point, we're gonna pay property tax dollars, so basically, they're not out. In the meantime, we could agree to do something like rebate or decrease or eliminate impact fees. When I say, when I say impact fees, I mean not connection to the water, and that actually costs money. But some of the things that we had, that we created in the mid-2000s, to try and control wealth, like the city public works fire police impact, things like that. Basically, to give them incentive to annex the city. But that's why I wanted to hear how this might be thought of.
Okay, let's start with Marsha.
So are these, are these farms that you're talking about, are they currently hooked up to city water and sewer now?
The farms, no. The farms, we have no deals with at all. The houses that have been built, up here, yes.
So if we, if we annex the farms, then we offer city water and sewer services, correct?
If they wanted, but pardon me, they're not gonna want it. If they wanted that, we'd develop, and we'd, of course, go and hold out for that. And Brent, I can't recall, where's the, where's the water come down from? Does it come from the north, or is that coming from Distillate Road? Could you recall?
Yeah, well...
Yeah, it goes down Distillery, and then it cuts across and goes down 20. Comes out right now, it comes out 20.
Didn't we install a well in the subdivision on Beaver Valley?
Yep, it's on the, if you see the two, call it the two ovals, it's on the north of the oval, up in the corner, keep going, keep going, nope, nope. Coming a little down, there you go, about right there, about right where his finger's at. And eventually, our plan shows that to take full advantage of that well with the booster pumps and stuff, there'll be additional water main that's planned right now to come out the, to the, on the east side of the property and go south back down to 20, conceivably when those, that big field parcel to the east of the current subdivision gets developed.
Alderman Crawford?
Yeah, would actually pay us to rebate them the property tax to get all the other taxes, wouldn't it?
I cannot tell you how much we are losing currently property taxes up there, but it's not insignificant. It's, I'm thinking, the $10,000 perhaps is a bit higher.
Alderman Porter?
Is there any way to, to annex it if it's not contiguous? Because according to the letter, it says generally speaking, it has to be contiguous.
No, it has to be.
With the taxpayer dollars that we invested to get sewer and water out there, that's the next logical step, where we're going to develop, and to bring them into the city. And I would not, I would not say that there is no interest in that. I've had people in my office every year to talk about that. This year, it's been a little more significant. The Landmark property folks, Jack Pacquen, who's one of the original partners in Landmark, was in to talk about what we wanted to see out there. I think this makes sense, and I think a quid pro quo is fine. I mean, if they'll annex in, we're not gonna charge them anything until, at the time that we do develop. And that offers them financial advantages if they decide to use some of their land for development on that side.
Alderman Snow?
So when it does come to the water portion, can I'm assuming those, the area, the residential area that's already developed, mostly, are they septic, or are they city?
So, well, the primary smallest subdivision sections are well and sewer. I'm sorry, water and sewer. Deer Woods, are they both, are they, well, are they water and septic, or are they water and sewer also?
Deer Woods, Deer Woods is, is water and sewer. The only one that's septic is the executive, the small, off of Distillery in the south.
Okay, that's, then we're not talking about that.
So do they pay the same rate that we generically do, or do they pay the upcharge that people that are in the city pay?
Uh, I think they're set up, they could be 10% outside.
I think they're set up on our rates.
On our rates?
We pretty much treat that entire area as if it's in the city.
Okay, just curious.
I could be wrong on that, but I'm pretty sure they're on our rates.
I'd have to look.
Generally speaking, Mr. Porter was in reference to, and he probably poor choice of words, but the continuity case is, there is no definition of what is true contiguous. Is 10 feet enough? The answer's no. How much is enough, nobody really knows. The rule says 300 feet of boundary share. The reason, it all comes out of Chicago, and Chicago next to the Chicago airport, they ran up 90, they annexed 90 up there. And they got away with it, and some other cities tried to do that, and got sued, and the court said, well, no, 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 you gotta be substantially touching, not just upper road. Some people got away with it, but...
I think as long as we have the national economy and a local economy that are expanding, it makes sense to be in position that when this happens, we don't have a time period delay to try to go and do this, and then try to get them to annex into the city, and then say, well, we want a million dollars to do it, you know, sort of thing. So, we have, we've let this lay fallow for a long time.
It's been brought to different mayors' attentions over periods of time, and so it's kind of, all right, we'll kick that can, just like kick the can out of the road, but we don't really want, it's gonna be a lot of work, is what it comes down to. Even, you know, I said this thing expires in 2025, six years now, a little under six years. Even once we get a continuity of Deer Hills developments, it's gonna take significant time to actually get the annexations done, just because we have to contact all this property north and get them on board. And that, that will take significant time to do.
So, having heard, do we have additional questions from the council? Yes.
I just wanted to know, do you need a motion to, uh...
No, just...
No, I don't want something out of council at this point. What I would recommend is to show of hands, whether you'd support offering certain incentives, obviously subject to your final review, to one or both of the farmers, in order to induce them to annex the city.
That's unanimous, then, you have your answer.
Those wanted to...
You want?
No, I'm just giving her her time.
Are we okay? Okay. All right, thank you, Attorney Drela.
Thank you.
Next, under item F, Alderman Snow has brought to our attention his concern about dead or dying ash trees on private property. And he furnished us with a sample of an ordinance from the city of Rockford dated 2017. And Alderman Snow?
So, my concern is that, as I go around my ward and other wards, that I see a lot of dead ash trees sitting in people's yards, and obviously, they either don't care, they can't afford to take it down, sticking their head in the sand, or whatever. And some of them, quite frankly, are on the back property lines, where it may be on their side of the fence, maybe on the neighbor's, depending on where they put the fence, you know. So, it just, I'm concerned about when those trees actually do start falling, that they're gonna be issues, whether they hit their own house, whether they hit the neighbor's house, whether it creates issues with neighbors that it falls on their fence and in their house, and knocks another tree down, whatever. So, I was just looking at as a point to bring it up, and to see if we, as a city, could help create, and I happened to find out this, with Rockford, apparently, they have a loan program type of a deal to help offset that, so that we could potentially help in that regards to facilitate getting those trees taken down. And I'm just throwing it out there as a point of topic, I'm a little concerned with as many of them as I see, and these are big trees, it's not like the homeowner can go out there with a tall ladder and start taking these down, these need to be brought down professionally with people with equipment, so. Just tossing it out there as a point of conversation, one of the things that I don't think that we need to do is facilitate people that have rental properties with that, in order to, that's the cost of doing business on their end, and as, and if need be, this looks like Rockford had a two-year program, but I could see where, depending on the tree size and what their circumstances are, they may not be able to pay it off in that amount of time. I could see leaving it up to Public Works to say, okay, we'll give you a longer, or, and/or leave it to the mayor's discretion, and/or have to bring it to the city council if somebody wanted a longer program, if we were to do something, as far as paying off having the tree taken down. So, just tossing it out there for conversation at this point.
Well, I want to clarify something, it would never come under the mayor's discretion, it would always be a vote of the council.
It would never come under the mayor's discretion, it would always be a vote of the council. That's not contingent, contingent to my powers to make those decisions between different homeowners. Director Anderson, would you have some comments on this idea?
Thank you, Your Honor. We have gone through the process as far as in the public right-of-way. As council knows, we've spent a lot of money in the last few years removing ash trees that were in the right-of-way, and most of them have been done. There's still some ash trees out there in the private property side. Certainly, one option would be to do, as you see on your desk from what City Rockford did. Again, that only addresses for the household income of $70,000 or below. If you do choose to do some type of program, from a public works standpoint, there's basically two of us in the administration of the Public Works Department. I'm not really looking to do add private trees to the list, but if the council desires, we can certainly make those accommodations. We talked about it this morning at staff meeting. Right now, I believe, if you wanted to entertain through the property code management, I don't think it covers dead, I'll call it landscape material on private property, trees, bushes, so forth. Perhaps it's one option. Another option available to us is to include that and make that part of the property maintenance standards, whereby if you do have the dead landscape material, that you are obligated then to remove it and remove that material. Perhaps would that be another option as well. I know back before I was, my time at the city, there was a Dutch elm disease that came through, and there was programs in place, but I would have to do some research to see what we actually did for that. I know there was some programs in place, but that was done by the time I started working here. That was done back in the seventies, early mid-seventies, I think.
Yes, Alderman Snow?
And maybe Kip might have a handle on it, because it sounded like, according to Brett, there is no code enforcement, even though it's a public safety issue when the tree does come down. Is there anything on your end that you know of?
We would have to amend the zoning code specifically.
Go ahead.
Is it the call out dead trees and trucks on private property right now with the code?
Right-of-way?
I was going to check, I didn't have a chance to check, the International Property Maintenance Code, which does cover nuisance bushes, nuisance weeds, things like that. It may cover dead trees. Also, the Illinois Municipal Code does cover the situation authorizing cities to take action regarding the dead trees and nuisance trees. So the Illinois Municipal Code already allows us to do that. With respect to that code, however, obviously, it's very similar to actions taken for buildings that are in disrepair, notice requirements, things like that. We are granted a lien for the cost, a removal of the tree if they don't do it. However, in some cases, that lien will be junior to the mortgage. In some cases, if we jump through the right hoops, it could be senior to the mortgage. But there is provisions in the Illinois Municipal Code and state statute. I'd also have to check out International Property Maintenance Code, because I know it does cover some weeds and things like that. I doubt it covers trees, but I'd have to check that. Our general municipal code strangely does not cover trees. It covers bushes. It covers trees that overhang the right-of-way, but it does not cover trees that are completely over private property.
Yes, Alderman Freeman?
So I'm not so much worried about bushes, they're more just aesthetic. But when it comes to the trees, there are a lot of dead ones. And even in my neighborhood, I see some that are like actually splitting down the middle. And I'm thinking, you know, when we get a big storm with those 60 mile an hour winds, that sucker's going to crash on somebody's house while somebody's sleeping. I don't know, I think it's a hazard. I don't know what we can do about it. It's not cheap to take down a tree. And I, I mean, I just don't know what the solution is, but I do think that it does need to be addressed some way, somehow.
Just a moment, Alderman Snow. There are a couple of things that come to my mind. Number one, we had help with our forestry programs to be able to take down the 3,000-plus trees that we've done over the last few years. To identify the trees and then inform the homeowner, you know, it's on their property, and it's, it would be their expense. And Alderman Snow had put forth a couple of ideas about how we could create a loan program and let them pay it back over time. I don't know that we're in the finance business. You know, it could end up being significant amounts. Concern that I have is, if they, if you have a dead tree on your property and it falls on your house, your homeowners won't cover it if they can prove or insinuate that you knew it was a dead tree and it fell on your house.
It's not when your neighbor's house.
Well, they may not cover it either, because it should, you should have taken care of it already. And I know this, because I had a birch in my front yard that was, kept leaning closer and closer to the house, so I asked my insurance agent about it, and she said, have it taken down, because if it falls on your house. And it wasn't going to fall on anybody else's house, because there's not a house next to mine. But then we would not cover it, because it's obvious if you came and looked at the tree, you put your arm into the trunk up to your elbow, it's not a healthy tree. So let's have a discussion, and let's see what folks think. What do you all think? Should we ought to try to create a program? We know what you think.
Well, no, I haven't finished that. So I guess part of my deal would be, is if we can loosely say that the building code that we've adopted may address it, and/or if we need to move something forward, let's move something forward in our own code to stipulate that these public safety issue nuisance items need to be addressed. In the meantime, let's note if, and it would be incumbent upon us generally speaking, but to notify residents that they've got a tree and you're on call now, that you've got a nuisance tree, you need to take care of it. And so then if we do wind up needing to pursue more action in order to make things safer for everybody.
Who in the city is going to have the time to go around and identify? How would we handle that, Brett?
I'm pretty sure the property maintenance code doesn't draft a tree.
So we would need to amend?
That code?
Chapter 118.
Of the rest of the code, call out dead trees and trucks, and it wouldn't be act or specifically for that.
No.
Or being a special tree that's on private property.
So who makes the determination that the tree's a threat?
Because during the spring, several months, 50% of the tree doesn't have trees on it. So that.
Okay, so that would be in the ordinance, and so, okay.
And communities have adopted this. Kip was kind of put, I think it was Rochelle's ordinance on my desk this morning. And it's, it's, cities do this. Keep in mind, if, no different than any other ordinance you adopt, if you're going to have an ordinance that requires a property owner to do something, the alternative is going to be that we assess fines if they don't. And so that will work its way through the system. And obviously, if it's important enough where you're dealing with a dangerous situation, that's warranted. But yes, no, the problem is, one who's going to do it. As far as going out there looking for them, it's not on complaint basis. Currently, this comes up a few times a year, where somebody will call up and somehow, it ends up on my desk somewhat frequently, and the call goes something like, my neighbor's got a tree that's hanging over my house, and, and they won't do anything about it, and the branchless side is dying, and I'm very afraid the next storm is going to crash through my roof. And my answer's always got to be the same thing. Legally, that's between you and your neighbor. It's a civil matter between the two of you. In theory, your property line goes from your property up to the heavens, so if you cut it off at the property line, there's not much the owner can, the owner of the tree can do to you, because it's over your property. But nobody wants to deal with that, because who wants to go get cherry picker and take care of the neighbor's tree for them? So, but it does come up somewhat regularly.
And, and I guess on my end, you know, it would, Public Works doesn't have the resources, and neither is anybody else in here to do it, and it would just be a course of time as you're driving around, turn it in to the building department and have them send the letter to the people that you observe that, hey, you know, you've got a dead tree, you need to do, you should really do something about it. He sends the letter, it's documented, and then if it starts becoming an issue, then at least we've got the letter to fall back on and start saying, hey, now, now we're getting serious about it, you need to really do something with it. And again, the whole idea is, the people that are going to come up and say, I can't afford to take the tree down, then we provide a means. And I didn't read this extensively, but Rockford apparently ties it in with their water bill. And if I read it right, it says if, if they don't pay their bill, because they're not paying their water bill, they'll shut the water off. You know, people, that kind of gets their attention. And then hence my idea that making longer payments for people who can't afford these kind of things.
That sounds like a court case to me. Shutting off their water because they didn't take down a tree, but I don't know. What do you think, Attorney Drela?
It has a certain simplicity to it.
It does. Well, let's go to step one. So we need to review our ordinance and take a look at Rochelle's ordinance and update or upgrade our ordinance to cover this. Would that be the first step, you think?
And I would make a motion to do so, so that if we had the opportunity to put it on next week's, to start moving it forward, to get the ordinance in place, so we get the first reading behind us next week, potentially. I would make that as a motion to.
If necessary, we can have it drafted by next week, no problem. But does the council wish, I guess there's two questions that you guys are discussing. One is whether or not we have the penal ordinance in place that requires somebody to maintain the trees, and if they don't, we either do it for them and lien the property, or we take them to court and force them to do it. The second question is, are we offering some kind of an incentive in the form of a loan or something along those lines to encourage those that say they can't afford to take down the tree to do so?
My motion would be, at this point, to get the ordinance in line, so they can move forward. Not that we are necessarily going, we don't enforce all the penalties where get-go in a lot of cases. This is a significant issue for a lot of people, so I wouldn't necessarily encourage that, unless it were a commercial piece of property or something like that, where they have resources. But I think moving forward, if we can get that in place, so then we can give a hit list to the community development, so that they can send out the notices and get the people hopefully to comply in a reasonable period of time before the tree does come down. And then as things progress, and we have people that can't afford it, then look at the loan program as an option.
Are you saying building code, chapter 118?
No, no, it's just a motion to direct the city attorney to draft an ordinance, regulating the removal of nuisance trees.
Where he's putting that in the code?
Figure that out later. It's going to be either in 118 or it's going to be in 22.
Well, I suppose.
That's my motion.
So I have a motion, do I have a second? I have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I was about to ask Director Anderson, and some of you have been on the council a little while, if you remember what our budgets were for taking down the trees we had to take down?
It's huge.
$140,000 a year. Those trees are $1,000, $1,500, $2,000 to take down. I don't know that we have a fund that we can start offering people the option, and once you put it, once you do it the first time, and you notify somebody to take down a tree, and they know they can get in the city's pocket to do it and pay it back when they feel like it, you know, I hate to have something where we got to shut off somebody's water because they didn't take down a tree. So I, I think it's a ball of snakes, but what were you going to say?
The only thing I was going to add was, you're going to have a situation with this as far as trees go, that you don't have with buildings or anything else, property maintenance, and that is determine ownership. As Alderman Snow stated, a lot of the trees are on quote-unquote the property lines, and we've had several instances in the past where we've gotten calls and said, well, this is my tree, or this is the neighbor's tree, and there's dispute on whose tree it actually is, or if it's a shared tree. So through this process, going forward, you may be incurring costs for survey work and other things to determine actual who owns, where's the property lines at, and who owns the trees, said trees in question. So just be aware, that's, you know, that's not a case with, when we have buildings and so forth, when we know whose is whose. But especially with the tree issue, there's a lot of them that are placed on the property line or the parent property lines, and that question will be there.
Well, let's take a look at a sample ordinance and discuss it some more, then we'll have time to think about it a little bit. Alderman Snow?
And on that line, I thought about that as well, in the fact that if you do have it on the property line, and I've seen some trees that appear that could be one of four people's tree, make an educated guess, send it to the appropriate owner. If they say, no, that's not my tree, that's the neighbor on the side, the back, or whatever, send the notice to them. At least get the ball moving so that they, somebody at least attempts in the near future to try to rectify it. Before we ever get, hopefully, if we can get some compliance, you know, even get a quarter of the people that got these dead trees to do something with it, it might behoove them. And if they think the city is serious about doing something, they might motivate them to do so.
Well, we'll get the ordinance back and review it and think about it some more and see about the penal thing. Yes, Alderman Freeman?
So my sister doesn't live in Belvidere, but her neighbor had a tree, and it fell onto her property, and her city told her she had to get that cleaned up. So she had to pay like big bucks to clean it up, even though it was her neighbor's tree, because it was on her property. So I thought that was just wrong. So something needs to be in there, like if it's, whoever owns the tree, if it falls, is responsible for that cleanup.
The only thing this ordinance will address is the taking down of trees, not necessarily the cleanup side. Again, that, that falls into homeowners insurance, private property rights, things like that. Your friend should have gone after her neighbor's insurance company and given them to do it.
Okay, so the city attorney is going to come back with a sample changed ordinance for us to take a look at. Okay, under number five, other police authorization to hire an entry-level police officer. Deputy Chief?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Alderman. Chief Woody provided a request for an authorization to hire a new police officer. On 7/11, Sergeant Gorsuch presented our department with a notice of retirement in November. This would put our police department one, police officer under its authorized strength of 43. In preparation for his replacement, the command staff needs to select, wear in, and send the new entry-level candidate to Celia in Glen Ellen to go to the law enforcement training, which is 14 weeks long. The next training class starts in September. We would, with the council's authorization, the Belvidere Police Department can have an entry-level officer selected, sworn in, and on the streets by Christmas. If the council preferred to wait until the formal retirement of Sergeant Gorsuch, the department's not going to be able to put another officer on the street until Easter of next year. We would request that we be authorized to hire an entry-level officer, which would put us over the authorized strength of 43 officers for a period of approximately two months.
I have a motion.
I'll make that motion.
I have, Alderman Porter beat you to it. You've got the second, George? Motion by Alderman Porter, second by Alderman Crawford. Questions or comments concerning the motion now on the floor? Hearing now, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed unanimously before the council of final disposition. Under item B, we have Fire Department needs, in the ongoing replacement of radios, has a radio request. Chief Heiser?
Thanks, Mayor. The Belvidere Fire Department is seeking authorization to purchase one mobile dual-head radio and four portable radios with chargers. These radios are the second and the final phase of the revamping and replacement of departments' aging emergency service radios. The Belvidere Fire Department uses Motorola and Rock River Service exclusively. The cost of this purchase, which includes installation totals $16,868.56. This is a fiscal 2020 budgeted item to be paid out of the capital fund.
Motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
By Alderman Crawford, second by Alderman Porter. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor? Yes, Alderman Snow?
How much did you originally have in the budget for, in the capital portion?
$17,500.
Oh, what a guy.
Additional questions or comments? Hearing not all, those in favor approval signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimously approved, forward to council for final disposition. Thank you, Chief Heiser.
Thank you.
Under item C, we have the appointment of Loretta Swanson and Sue Holmes to the Ida Public Library Board of Trustees, may have a motion to approve. Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderman Porter. Questions, comments, or further discussion? Hearing not all, those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. It is approved and forward to council for final disposition. Which brings us to adjournment. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn to this evening's proceedings. Thank you, Alderman Crawford. Do I have a second? Thank you, Alderman McGee. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Well, thank you, ladies and gentlemen. We are now adjourned.